Good evening, everyone. My name is Lawrence Cash. I work in the Project Management Section at the Massachusetts Department Transportation Division at Dawson Office. I am the MassDOT project manager for the Twin Cities Rail Trail project that is being presented this evening. Your attendance at this hearing can be formally recorded. Once the hearing is over, the attendance sheet will become part of the record. And so if you would like your attendance at this hearing to be part of the record, please sign in. The sign-in sheet is up front on the right there. And you can also take a handout. You can also -- you'll notice on the back that there is a mail-in sheet for that handout as well. I will introduce the design team present here this evening to help answer any questions that you might have on the project this evening. So to the far left over there, to your right actually, would be Thomas Emmerich and Anne Sullivan and Mickey Splain from MassDOT's District 3 office. They also have Linda Walsh and Pam Markey from MassDOT's Community Compliance Right-of-Way Bureau. Up front here, we have John Hendrickson and Betsy Kirkland from StanTech. And also, there's a row from Brown Richardson Row. Both StanTech and Brown Richardson Row are represented. The EO EDA is a design consultant for this project. And also, we have representative from EO EDA, Kurt Gardner is present here this evening. I would like to also thank Leominster Mayor Dean Mazzarella for attending this evening. And I also believe that Mayor Steve DiNatali is on his way to make mayor of Pittsburgh. And also, on the front left here, we have Ian Carrington, who will be making the verbatim transcript of tonight's hearing. The hearing notice appeared in Telegram Gazette on February 27 and March 6, 2019. A copy of this notice is in the handout and will be attached to the final hearing transcript. Currently, we are finishing up with the 25% design stage, which means that after this hearing, we'll be advancing the project toward a final design submission. We estimate the construction cost for the whole project will be approximately $18 to $20 million. This project must be programmed in the statewide transportation improvement program in the appropriate federal fiscal year in order for MassDOT to solicit bids for eventual The total federal participating cost of this project does not include any right-of-way I would like to first have, for the rail trail project this evening, we will have Linda Walsh explain the right-of-way procedures for you. And then after that, we'll have our design consultant explain the presentation for you. And then we will open the hearing to the public.
When the Commonwealth acting through its Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division indicated it would accept this $18 to $20 million project for funding, your municipalities accepted certain responsibilities. One of those responsibilities is acquiring all the necessary rights in private and public lands for the design, construction, and implementation of this project. My function is to review and recommend procedures that your municipalities will use in acquiring these rights. The procedures used must comply with both federal and state regulations. The current design plans indicate that there are both permanent and temporary easements needed. The property owners impacted by this project will be contacted by each municipality. They will present the proposed impacts to each owner and discuss the methods with which they may acquire the needed rights for the project. Frequently, municipalities will appeal to donations to minimize the acquisition cost to your community. However, donations are not required, and property owners are entitled to appraisal, review appraisal, and just compensation. Right-of-way documents will be provided to each owner to help them understand the acquisition process and how the project affects their property. Affected property owners' rights are protected under all Massachusetts general laws, primarily Chapter 79. And because this project is receiving federal funds, the property owners' rights are further defined under Title III of the Real Property Act of 1970 as amended. I will be happy to answer any general questions concerning right-of-way activities during the open forum, and I will be available after the hearing for any specific questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Now, I would like to have John Hendrickson from StanTech to come up and describe the project in detail for you and go through the presentation. And then after, we'll try to help answer some questions or comments that you might have.
Well, the first thing I would like to say is, wow. We've been to dozens of rail trail meetings throughout the Commonwealth, and this is by far the largest crowd that we've ever had. So thank you all for coming. As Larry said, I'd like to talk about the design of the project, but I should like to mention that we have several engineers, both MasDOD and StanTech, and the landscape architect. So if you have a question, and if you don't want to ask in front of this group, we will be staying afterwards, and we can answer those questions individually. Could you turn down the lights, please? Thank you very much. So we actually have, this is a photo on the right of one of our team meetings. We actually have a great team working on this project. MasDOD Highway Division is responsible for construction funding and administrative design and providing the residential area during construction. The executive officer of Energy and Environment to the Gateway Cities Program is funding the design. The cities are the project components. And StanTech and Brown Richardson Row are fully committed to design. We have had two listening sessions. I see some familiar faces here from the first one. They were held at the beginning of the project. The client group and the design team met. Both cities are here from Citizens along the trail. The members of the Trail Association and several city councils in both cities attended these meetings. Like I said, I can see several people from both communities at night. Why do we need this project? The benefits of multiple trails are numerous. We've only outlined some here. Economic development, the trail will encourage more people to come to Leominster and Pittsburgh's businesses and provide puts and services. For example, if you look out the window here, you'll actually see the rail trail. I can see this hotel saying, advertising in the brochure, "Come to our hotel, we're on the rail trail," and selling their business that way. And I can see that happening with a lot of people, businesses downtown. The trail provides another inexpensive way for people to get to the jobs. And what we think is the key is the transportation. The trail provides a safe transportation alternative for residents and workers of all ages and abilities. This will have four and a half miles of trail, and residents will be able to walk and ride to grocery stores, to businesses, and most importantly, to the Pittsburgh Transportation So the proposed improvements, and I would like to mention that on the handout, I do have a map that while we're performing during this presentation of this. We start it from the south. There's downtown, not necessarily Mechanics Street. Going down, this would be Route 2. And this would be -- whoa. And this would be downtown Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh Transportation Center. So before we start, let me say what the proposed improvements will look like. The proposed trail is a 12-foot-wide, two-man's concrete trail with two-foot-wide shoulders. The reason for the two-foot shoulders is that if you ride on your bike, for some reason you fall off the trail, you have two feet to recover and get back on the trail. Believe me, I do that a lot. So against downtown Mechanics Street, most of you probably don't even know that this line was the Pittsburgh and Worcester River back in the 1850s. That was Musnot Ford. I've said it 100 times, I get it a lot the time. But it was not Ford. There's a beautiful triple arched stone bridge, and it's out there today. It was built in the 1850s. And we are actually going over that. This is the bridge today. We will have to repair some of it, and a little bit of disrepair. But we will be providing an overlook on top of this with fences, and it will be a beautiful overlook. Traveling north, there were two train stations in Leominster. This is the Leominster Center train station. And as you can see, this would be the right-of-way corridor. There are a lot of encroachments on the existing -- there are a lot of encroachments on this existing corridor. For example, the vehicles parked at this location are within the right-of-way. Both cities have sent letters to the owners of these businesses and homes to remove these encroachments off of the trail. Now, this would be the proposed conditions. If you see the vehicles removed, we're putting a little rest area, putting some signs. This would be a beautiful spot again to stop and rest. Going further north, the next stop is Cottaback. Some of you might remember back in the fall of 2005, the rails were removed. But now you won't even notice that there wasn't a trail. I think that railroad back there. So this is Route 12 at Mill Street. There are 15 street crossings on this project. Each one of these crossings will have signs and pavement marking improvements at each one. Some will actually have signals. Now, I'm going to go to an aerial view of this. So this would be Cottaback. And see where this pavement is, is where the trail used to be. So we will direct the people on the trail to the signals. They'll push the button, they'll cross the street, and they'll get back on the trail. So it will be a safe crossing at that location. The next stop would be Doyle Field. This is the field to the left. And I'm going to go to an aerial photo, so if you notice this fence and this fence, here's aerial photo. So that's a chain link fence, and this is a wooden fence. This entire corridor is now owned by the city. So we'll be taking down that fence, and this entire corridor will abut the fields. So if you want to go to a game, you can easily walk or take your bike, and you don't have to park at the field. We will be highlighting the railroad history. This is a whistle post, so when the train came up to a street, this would tell them to blow their whistle. And there's a lot of additional information like that on the trail that we will preserve. This is the fork just south of Hamilton Street. Again, you probably don't realize this, but there used to be a culvert. It was washed away. So right now, this is simply a fork. We will be putting a bridge over this location. These are the plans. We are proposing an hatch. And this will show you a schematic. This is what it will actually look like. And just to tell you that a silver bridge will be at Route 2 when I come after that minute. The next stop would be at the shopping center. Again, you'll be able to walk or take your bike to the shopping center. And I'm going to go to the aerial view of it. What is that sign? I must be getting something. So here's that sign at this location. So today, you probably don't even know, the former railroad goes right through the driveway, and that's where the trail will go. And I did want to talk about the drains along the trail. Route 2 was on the left, up on top of this hill. A lot of times, Route 12, I'm sorry, Route 12. Route 12 will be draining onto the trail. So you can see there's a swirling now. You can see where they took out the ties. We will propose in one slope, the trail isn't crowned. It's not like a highway, it's not crowned in the middle. It's crowned from one side to the other. So it will be crowned this way, and all the water would sheet into the existing well. And that swell will go into a wetland or whatever system it goes in today. So we do not propose any closed drainage system throughout the entire project. And this is just a schematic again showing that the water will just sweep and be done going to this swirling. Going north further, the next stop is the Route 2 bridge. This bridge will be removed, including the abutments. So as you probably know, this is Route 2, and this is Route 12. Having these abutments is a short acceleration ramp before you have to get back on Route 2 to make room for this ramp. MasDOD has directed us, and we think it's really a great goal, to provide two acceleration lanes in the future. I'll go to the aerial photo. So this would be the on-ramp. We have, we're not building new acceleration ramps, but we're providing space with this abutment. We're moving it back approximately 30 feet. So there'll be two acceleration lanes here in the future. Again, we're not building lanes, but we are building the bridge so that they will be provided for in the future. And then here's where we're sitting today. That could be the one that we look over. We'll be here. And this is just a picture of a sample bridge we will be using in these type of abutments. And it will be a prefab hatch bridge. We won't have that chain link fence, but it will look similar to this. This is the Kinkaw Rail Trail Bridge at Dennis Avenue. Going further north to Pittsburgh, this is the former Halloween site. We will be providing a rest stop and parking at this location since there's available right-of-way. So at some point along this trail, the existing abandoned rail line meets the active rail line. And this happens to be the location at the bridge. So this is our trail. We were going underneath the bridge, and at one point, we have to go on-road to meet to get off of the active rail. So we will have a small section where we call rails with trails, where the trail will be close to the train, but there will be protection with fencing. And we've done this at several locations throughout this week. So again, this would be the bridge. This is a picture I showed going underneath the bridge. This would be 4th Street. This is the active line, and this is the abandoned line. So we're going to meet the bridge, ramping up, and meeting 4th Street. At this point, we will go on-road to the tracks. So again, this is the bridge. This is our on-ramp. This is 4th Street. We are meeting at 1st Street. So we'll be going up 4th Street, down Metal Street, down 1st Street, and we'll be meeting at where the MasDOD porch was just recently built. So this would be a on-road trail. It would just be paint. There would not be any crews to the street. So now, let's start here. So this is 4th Street, and this would be the Nashville River. And I just want to show, pitch it back to the day. This is actually where Market Basket is today. These are the bridges they're going to look like. It's very similar to a Musnot Brook bridge. Back in the day, they built soya passways so that the workers could go from one side of the tracks to the other. That is sentiment. And this is what the bridge looks like today at North Nashville River. The reason I show you that is, again, this would be 1st Street, where we're ramping up, we're putting a bridge over the North Nashville River. And what will happen is there will be an overlook so you can be able to see that historic bridge when you're on, the historic bridge when you're on the new bridge. We'll then be crossing the NPTA tracks. Then there will be three structures to meet existing parking lot. And then the final stop is Pittsburgh and tomorrow's Transportation Center. So that will be all the way from the Musnot Brook all the way to the Pittsburgh and tomorrow's Transportation Center. Just a couple more things I want to touch on. Environmental permitting. We do have to submit an environmental notification form, or ENF, to NECO. With NECO, we have to proceed checklist. We do have to provide a Section 106 extra clearance. And because we're going over the North Nashville River, we have to do a Chapter 91 license. And we have to submit a notice of intent to both local conservation officials. We don't see any issues with the state permits from these groups. And as Linda mentioned earlier, there are some right-of-way issues. As Linda said, if you care right-of-way, it's necessary. Your municipality is responsible for providing unnecessary rights. If your property is affected, your rights are fully protected. And we showed, we wanted to show this. For example, this is back at Leominster train station. The traffic line is right here. We want to improve this area. So in order for us to do that, we need an easement from the owner of that building to go onto his property to improve that. And a lot of easements like that warrant growth. And I do want to explain briefly, this project has been broken into two phases. The yellow, and it's showing the plan that you have in the handout. The yellow down the bottom is from Cottaback down to Mechanics Street. And the reason that we're putting that in Phase 2 is that the city is in the process of buying that section of the corridor from the former railroad. The other section of Phase 2 is that the north, which is those five bridges that I talked about. The reason for that is it's taken longer to design bridges than it is to trail. So those two sections are in Phase 1. And I would like to show the schedule on that's going to go to. I'm sorry, basically, that's. So 25% design was submitted in 2017, and we have a public hearing today. 75% design submitted in April of this year. The communities will be steering the right-of-way for Phase 1 during the summer of this year. This project will be advertised in September 2019. Phase 1 construction will begin in the spring of 2020. Phase 2 design will be submitted in the summer of 2020. So Phase 2 is the bridge at the southern end of the project. And Phase 2 construction will begin in the summer of 2021. We think that would take two years to build, so we're saying 2021 is the actual time. And we just want to show a couple examples. It's part of the Gateway Cities we just designed, this trail in Fall River. See the signage that will be provided along the corridor? Something similar, but not just like this. And you see the two-foot shoulders and landscaping. And this would be a proposed rest stop. So where it proposes, it's been set not exactly like this, but similar to this, along the corridor. Oh, Dan, I'd like to do it back to life.
Okay, thank you, John. Before I open the hearing, question for comments, let me just explain that hearing procedure. We ask that anyone who wishes to have his or her comments entered into the hearing transcript, please stand up by the microphone up front here. I can hand you this microphone. And identify yourself by name and affiliation, whether you are a foreign local official or a concerned citizen. And spell your last name. This is necessary for us to obtain a verbatim transcript as required by law. Also, again, the last sheet of the handout is a mail-in sheet. If you have any questions or comments which you would like to submit and writing, please use this sheet for that purpose. You may leave this sheet with me tonight, or you may mail it to the department within 10 business days of the date of this date, and it will become part of the official record. Finally, it is normal procedure to ask elected officials to offer their comments first. So are there any federal, state, or local elected officials who would like to speak
Can we just ask all the elected officials to come out? Because we're going to be here all night. The project will already be built by finally everybody gets to speak. So if all the elected officials want to come forward, otherwise, you're going to be here. We'll have to open the restaurant.
I'll say, okay.
Tell your last name!
It depends. Dean Mazzarella, they're the city elements, also on the board at MasDOD. And 17 years ago, we started this project. And many of the city employees that are behind me that worked on this project, some are with us, some have moved on to other positions. Sometimes, people didn't believe this project was going to actually happen. But it's a really exciting project in so many ways. It's one of the most unique projects that there is around. And it really does have a transportation component to it. And I know a lot of projects say they do, but they don't always really do. This one actually does. And it's got a recreational component of it. It looks into Leominster side, looks into our downtown, Doyle Field, another retail centers, the hospital. It's just, it's just so exciting. And to see all the pictures that are here today, I hope it restores faith in everybody that this project is actually going to happen. But 17 years ago, Congressman Ower really gets the credit for this because he got an actual earmark for this. This is one of the very few, not the only earmarked project in the entire Commonwealth. So he's no longer the congressman, but really, he really stuck with it on us, with us. And it's been a whole lot of hard work from a whole lot of people, but people stuck with it. So everybody that's here, I think, just clearly shows their support for the project. Now, why didn't we have this in the big room? Where are the Doubletree people? What a failure! My God! I know. All right, all right, I know. They pay taxes to the roof. That's right. There you go. I, you know, I think it was, a very nice job was done in recommending and stating why this is important to both communities. The economic development piece appeals to me certainly. And I'm going to be very brief. This is going to provide this uncontrollable desire on the part of the people of Leominster to live, to bike, walk, and run to Pittsburgh. And that's where we're hoping to, thank you.
Are there any other elected officials that would like to speak at this time?
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Amy Green. I am Ward 1 counselor for the City of Pittsburgh. This project starts at the beginning of my ward, which is the Market Basket Plaza. I've been involved in this project, I've been only involved for six years, but it was at the inception when it was one of the first public hearings that we had with this idea of a rail trail, which we had never heard about before. So I am certainly thankful and grateful for the turnout, for the support, for MassDOT getting involved. We would have probably never been able to pull this project off without their help. So I want to recognize the help, the dedication, and the hard work that's gone into this so far. And we look for a completed rail trail someday so we can make you submit. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other elected officials at this time that would like to speak, you can also speak later, that's fine. We now open the hearing to the public for your questions and comments. So again, if you have questions and comments, you can just come up front here, and we can now pass the microphone to you.
Thanks, Larry. My name's Larry Cassassa. That's C-A-S-A-S-S-A. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh and also sit on the Twin Cities Rail Trail Association. I was asked by the association to say a few words on its behalf today. And any of you who have signed in, if you left us your email address, we will make sure to send you notices and keep you updated as the project moves along, and there are noteworthy things to keep you up to date on. I prepared a brief statement to submit on behalf of the association, and we certainly welcome all residents and people interested in becoming involved in the association in future years. So we're just so pleased to have you here tonight. I'm going to read briefly from that statement, and then I will submit it to Larry and move on. I'm pleased to submit this statement on behalf of the Twin Cities Rail Trail Association, which is comprised of residents and volunteer citizens acting on behalf of the cities of both Pittsburgh and Leominster. In addition to our work in supporting the acquisition and funding of this trail for the past 15 years, the association will work on behalf of both cities in providing ongoing maintenance and upkeep of this trail once it is completed to ensure that it provides for the long-term recreation. for the long-term recreational and lifestyle benefit of all its future users, from walkers to cyclists to commuters accessing both the train and bus service in the area. And that's obviously particularly important. While we're pleased that phase one of the project is now moving forward toward advertising and bidding this year, we can't overstress the importance of ensuring that phase two follows closely on the heels of phase one. And that construction commends on the second phase within a year as proposed of phase one. The second phase is critical to both the transit-oriented development and environmental justice success of the project, particularly at the northern terminus, as it will greatly expand access to and use of the trail by Fitchburg residents and Lomond St. residents, and provide direct connection to the market to a mode of transportation center and the city's downtown district. Similarly, it will also allow an expansion of the southern terminus of the trail in order to increase access to and use of the trail for Lomond St. residents living in the heavily settled residential neighborhoods surrounding the Mechanic Street area. In closing, we thank both the Mass Department of Transportation and the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for their decision to fund this vital trail in north-central Massachusetts. We commend their efforts to ensure the success of both phases of this project. We stand ready to support both agencies in any way possible through and beyond the day when we can officially cut the ribbon and open this wonderful amenity to the residents of both our great cities.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Goldway, and I live on Free Street. And I guess when you go over a street, you have to curve, and that brings the trail like right next to my driveway. And I've had things taken from my car. My neighbors have had things taken out of their garage. I'll feel unsafe, and I have a dog that's on a constantly bark. And before, when that whole area was open, we'd had people like robbing the bank and police up and down. I myself feel unsafe with it being so close to my residence. That's all I wanted to say, just to get, you know, maybe swing it off towards Doyle Field rather than Miami, all right? Because like I said, I have had things taken out of my car and other people along the street, so I would feel unsafe.
Spell your last name, please.
So my name is Dick O'Brien. I'm a resident of Lomond St. I'm a member of the Twin City Rail Trail Association. But I'm here in my capacity as a member of the Monarch's Regional Trails Coalition, where a group of volunteers representing communities, trail groups, nonprofits, are in user groups like hikers and mountain bikers, equestrians, et cetera. We have been working for a number of years trying to promote and foster a more regional view of the trail network here. And on that, and I want to thank Mass DOT and the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, or Energy and Environmental Affairs, for their increased support for multi-use trails. As in spite of recent environmental bond amount in the new expanded grant program, the Mass Trails Program, I want to see that continue and expand if we can. I'm here because I was involved from the very beginning with this project. I'm thrilled to death to see it come forward. Tremendous efforts by the cities, both Fitchburg and Lomond St., to make it happen by this state, that's terrific. But I also want to encourage us not only to celebrate the fact that this is coming to fruition, but to look at the next stage. So if this is stage one and two, I'm here to say, don't forget, we're already talking about a stage three and four. And we're going to count on all of you to show your support. And I don't know if all of you read the fine print when you signed in. It did say you were volunteering for 50 hours. Just kidding about that. But again, I just want to thank Mass DOT, Executive Office, the City of Lomond St., the City of Fitchburg. For some of us, we really began to wonder whether this was going to happen, and to see it coming through, that's terrific. One last comment. The woman who came before me expressed a real concern about potential issues for a bonus next to the trail. As a trail professional, a trail contractor, I can tell you that the research indicates that when these trails are established in the IUs by many people, actually crime and that kind of unwanted activity really drops. And so more than being afraid that it will increase, research shows across the country that those crime rates drop. So it's not to say we shouldn't be concerned about it and take actions, but I don't think we need to be unnecessarily worried about crime increasing here.
Well, I'm not really too excited about the area in Quorley, but my name is Lou Georgie, and I own property in both Lomond St. and Fitchburg, one of which, I've bought some property. My question was actually for the design team. You said it's going to be 12 feet wide, so that's four feet of grass, two feet on each side, and eight feet of paved road.
12 feet of paved.
I think that might... When I lived in Rhode Island, they had a bike trail that went from Providence all the way to Newport. And I actually think that 12 feet, I'd rather see more green space myself. I think eight feet is pretty adequate. And when I was on that trail, I know a lot of people on that trail, I don't think you really have to worry about people, you know, being worried about the gas trend like that because they'll get used. There'll be road lanes on there, there'll be bikes on there, people walking on there. And I don't think that's really going to be that much of an issue. It looks like a really nice proposal, and I'm pretty excited about it.
Hi, my name is Mayor Lily Hinton. I'm a resident of Lomond St. No, oh, you're that way. And my husband and I ride rail trails all the time. We actually go all over New England and New York and ride every single weekend. And I have to go out of town during the week to go ride either in Acton or up to the Nashua River Trail. So to have a trail here in town will be amazing, and I won't have to ride in the cemetery, which is one of the things, other things that I do to write. I had to write myself a note because I forget between here and there what I wanted to say. So two questions that I had. One is, will the trail be accessible in the winter? Will it be plowed and maintained? Because there's really only one trail in Massachusetts right now that is, and that is the Minuteman that goes into Boston. All the rest of them are pretty much snow-covered. So I'm just curious if there's plans for winter usage of the trail. And then the other thing I wanted to ask, the on-road section. I ride a recumbent bike, so I'm very low to the ground. On-road sections scare me to death, but I know that's probably nothing that can be avoided. So I'm curious at what point, what mileage point that is, because I would turn around and go back and just keep riding back and forth. I don't go onto the roads, I'm too scared. So I'd be just curious to find out a little bit more of the on-road section, how long it is, and how far from the end.
Good, thank you. Yeah, that's a good question about the winter and snow removal. And I know that there's already discussions about the maintenance of the trail and how that might be done in the winter. And, you know, when the bridge is actually complete, you know, that's something that would have to be cleared, you know, to get access over to the train station. And of course, you know, off of First Street, being a street that would already be cleared, so it would be really just more like the rest of the path. And, you know, how frequent are, how, whether it would be immediate after or normal, whether there's some lag, you know, those are things that the communities are both talking about.
Hi, I'm Regina Levick. Just a quick question. Are you planning city bike stations to help support the maintenance?
That would be a city, the city's decision. As with maintenance.
City bikes? You know what city bikes are?
Yes, rentals and all that. Yes.
Well, right on.
Absolutely.
You're going to do that?
Well, Trish just brought it up. Let Trish go. Just had a conversation.
To support the maintenance.
And we plan on, just so you know, we plan on, I'm not going to speak to the other city there to the north. We plan on, I mean, we'll work with the trails groups, and we plan on plowing it. It might not be the first thing we plow, but we'll eventually get it plowed. And since we're on the sunny side of things, it'll, at all times.
Hi, I'm from Lomond St., and I just wanted to comment on the trails not being plowed. That's a great time to go cross-country skiing. You know, or snowshoeing. It's a great thing. I keep looking for that, you know, like looking for a place to go cross-country skiing or snowshoeing, and I can't find it. Shoulder clubs? That's a good one, too. This would be nice if you wanted to go for like an extended period of time or whatever. I don't know how to put the trails out, but shoulder clubs are pretty good. Cool. Well, another place to go snowshoeing and cross-country skiing. Sorry. P U T R I C C A.
Good evening, my name is Trish Stoney, P-I-S-T-O-N-E. I am a local resident, up here in my capacity as Vice President and Montiskar Butey Council, where, among other things, I also serve as the coordinator of EPH's Mass In motion Initiative for Fitchburg County. I should also note that I'm a former aide to Congressman Don Over, and I worked on the original earmark in the CSX negotiations, so. So while I wasn't going to date myself, thank you so much, Mayor Mazarella, for doing that. I am very thrilled to see this project moving forward. I appreciate the stewards from the local leadership, the rail trail advocates, and certainly Matt Scott for keeping this on track, no pun intended. I do have just a brief series of comments that I'd like to submit for the record, and I'll provide this to you. I wanted to slide my voice of the importance of this project, both from an economic development as well as a community asset for improving active living options in the region, as was also demonstrated in the presentation. Well, as my understanding that we have received assurances from MassDOT that these phases will occur seamlessly, we need to make sure that it happens. If there was to be a lag between the two phases, Fitchburg would be years away, if ever, from seeing the benefits in the downtown for this project. Please note, this project was intended to mutually benefit both communities. In Fitchburg, it certainly was intended to reach mean street. Today, in Fitchburg, we have even more resources and opportunities in our downtown and expanded commuter rail, which, again, Congressman Ower supported, ready and well-positioned for transit-oriented development. We need the path to connect Fitchburg and a motor station, so please ensure that these two phases occur side by side. And just one other thing, in data and both Fitchburg and Lomond St. show that there's disproportionate amounts of obesity compared to the state average, and we know those rates are higher in more vulnerable populations and neighborhoods. Therefore, I ask Matt Scott to further consider racial and socioeconomic equity in this work. While Matt Scott has a number of high-profile tip projects over the next few years in this area, we press a further work in the City of Fitchburg and the City of Lomond St. to ensure that these assets are further connected, not just the downtown, but the local neighborhoods to promote more walking and biking. And as the mayor mentioned, I think the idea of a bike share program is great for the entire region, and I look forward to having those conversations with the real association and the cities in the future.
So my name is Lauren Cohen, that is C-O-H-E-M. And I have two questions. The first one, Mayor Mazarella, you said that you, it might be, the trail might be plowed eventually? Consider this is Lomond St. How long is eventually?
I think you do a pretty good job of that, too. Yep. But my other question for biking accommodations. I've done a lot of biking over the past few years through the scouts. I've had a lot of fun biking 13, good, like 15 miles, 25 miles on the rail, a rail trail. I've actually gone all over the city, north-handedly, 50 miles in one day. It was a lot of fun. My big question, especially for the Doyle area, but also for other areas, where would I be able to park my bike, bounce towards some photo event? I want, if I want to go to Doyle Field, I want to go to a football game. I want to go to the Thanksgiving game, watch a sea of Fitchburg again. I want to ride my bike. How do I have a bike right there to park my bike or to keep walking?
One more, one more.
Hi, everybody, my name's Kevin. I am a chef of roots. If you've never been roots, come on down, roots. So I'm from Lomond St. I grew up here, I moved to Boulder, and then I moved to San Francisco. These are two cities that both had integrated bike paths throughout the cities, and it made living there enjoyable, fun, healthy, and I'm so excited for the future of Lomond St. and Fitchburg so people can ride their bikes. If you've driven through Route 12, the traffic is getting worse and worse every day. I think it's going to relieve traffic, it's going to give people a healthier way to live their life, and I think it's going to really improve the region.
Hi, my name's Jane Elliott, E-L-L-I-O-T-T. And I'm just curious, my residence is Doyle Field is my backyard. So what we're wondering is, where is exactly the trail going to start? Is it starting from like where the fence is now at Doyle Field and how many feet? No one can give us an answer as to what's happening there. And on the personal property side, I noticed that you had this really low fence there. Is that what you're putting as a separation for the properties, or are we getting a privacy fence? Because most of us have fences that are high, because there is people walking through there now, you know. Unfortunately, at night, it's not so good people, you know, throwing their needles and stuff. We have to go out there and clean it all up. So we look like a tower fence instead of that little thing that does nothing. So we're wondering what are you going to do for the people that live there?
So fences... So fences and screening, generally, the way that they work on these rail trails, it's definitely something, it's a case-by-case kind of basis, you know, so like if there was like, say, natural tree lining there, or something was removed like that, and something had to be replaced, then, you know, plantings can go back in. If there was, not that if you have to have a fence, but if there was some real reason after talking with the design team and the district and the city, that if we felt that something needed to be put there, then, you know, that's something that, that we could look into. It's, it's not really recommended to have, like, you know, I envision a rail trail having a fence line all the way down, because it's just, that's not really what, as you saw on the examples that were shown there. You wanna have kinda like an open, kinda feeling to it. Perhaps John can show a little bit of the Doyle Field. I don't know if there is a location that we can point to.
So I would want, I think I did mention in the presentation that we actually now do have plans. So we can actually go to your house and show you exactly where it is situated, where your house is. I'll try to go back and try to find this. Actually, the slide is just a photo of it, of what it is. So afterwards, we have engineers, we have like five engineers here, we have the design plans, so please come back and we can show you exactly where the trail is. And if you have some issues, we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Willoughby. I'm just wondering, well, a better picture of the plan being on the vehicle senior line? Like, I live in Pittsburgh, and I was just curious on the phase two, how it went through Fourth Street, and Middle Street, and down there, really better how that went, because if I look on this map, it's really hard to see. So I wonder if any of this is gonna be online, a better picture of the design.
Yes, I think it went Fourth Street, and then up to Middle, Middle goes across down over the First Street.
Yeah, but then somehow you get across the river and get a possibility.
Yes, that is going to be a new bridge system, so there'll be a bridge that will, you'll have a kind of what they call a bridge approach, where you'll walk up to the bridge, and it will go over the Nashua River, and then over, it'll come to sort of like, almost like a right angle, and then it'll go across the M B T railroad tracks. And then it'll also span over another property, and then come down onto the parking lot, but it'll be, that will also be spanned over, so that the parking can still continue underneath the bridge, the new bridge system.
And just to add on, we do have those plans with us tonight also. And Betsy, our virtual engineer is here, she can go mark with the plans with you. I do not know if they're all left or right.
You know, what, once we get, at the end of April, April, when we get more of the file design kind of drawing, anything, well, actually, you know, any of these bridge structures, if we feel that they're at a point where, that it would be a nice display that we can post on the website, we can also, not just, sometimes we post things on Mass D O T website, but we also recommend that we can send some of the files to the municipalities, and they can post it on their own.
My name is Edward Levitt, and I have one question. Is this going to be lighted?
Now lighted.
Oh. So throughout the Commonwealth, you find very few trails that are lit. And the reason is, is that you're in the middle of woods, and lighting gives you the impression that you can walk down there and be safe, and you're not. So no trails in Massachusetts, except, I don't even think the Minuteman is light, so that's the reason why.
That's, I mean, that's true, and it's also, you know, pretty close to some backyards as well.
Just to let everyone know, if you did leave your email address with us, with the Twin Cities Rail Trail Association, we will be sending you regular updates, and we will be including any submissions that are available on the Facebook page that we set up. So we'd love for you to tune in and to get involved in the association, because our biggest role is gonna be keeping this trail in good, clean shape, removing graffiti, replacing any signs that are damaged, so that we have this trail for the future, by in tip-top shape.
Your name again?
Larry Casassa. C A S A S A.
Hi, Thomas Krowski, I'm the Executive Director of Planning and Community Development for the city of Pittsburgh. Do you want me to spell that? It's S K W I E R A W S K I. I would just like to thank everybody for coming out here tonight. This is an incredible turnout, and thank everyone from the state for making this happen. And of course, Stan Tech and the whole team, we couldn't do it without you. And I also wanna thank one person in particular, and you just heard from him, actually. So Larry Casassa, aside from being the Chair of the Twin City Rail Trail Association, he's my predecessor at the city. And if you think about this as sort of a relay race, he ran about a marathon, and then he basically handed off the baton for me to run the hundred-yard dash, which puts me in a great position. I get to be there and cut the ribbon and all that fun stuff, but Larry's really done the work. Larry helped negotiate with CSX, which, go figure, they didn't wanna give away that piece of land for free, but he was really working doggedly, day and night, to make sure we got that parcel of land, which without that, this wouldn't happen, we wouldn't be here today. So I just wanted to take a moment and thank Larry for his...
Hi, I'm wondering also if there's any plans for a bike repair station along the way. The Gardner Rail Trail has two repair stations along the way, where someone can stop and put their bike up, there's a few tools and a pump, and it comes in incredibly handy for people.
Interesting calling. Some kinds of considerations. Typically, those stations are sponsored by a local business, so if someone wants to want a sponsor, they could put that, like, especially because of maintenance.
In Gardner, a man from the DPW built the structure and attached the tools and put it all up and everything, so.
So Pam, that would be something that the Twin City Rail Trail Association could look into this fourth street, and find this place, and I think we could agree that it's a nice amenity to have, while we can look at that. You're gonna regret that. It'd be delightful again.
Really weird to give this to you.
Right, I take a line again, this time as a member of the Twin City Rail Trail Association. All I'm saying is that I think that's a great idea, and I'm more than happy to bring that up for consideration, and the group act will be taking over the long-term maintenance of the trail. I'd love to see us find this one, sort of, excuse me, or come up with money to do it ourselves. So it's a great idea.
Hi there, my name's Andrea Freeman, F R E E M A N. I too am on the steering committee for the Twin Cities Rail Trail Association. I wanna just echo a lot of the support that I've heard from folks. So glad, this was, I moved here in two thousand and three from out of state, and this was, I didn't know anybody, this was the first thing I got involved with, sixteen years later. I'm just over the moon happy that this is happening. And I just wanna point out, I do have a question, actually. The interest in design, is there, are there opportunities, or could there be opportunities for installation art, or, you know, some type of, the community can be involved in in terms of having some artistic, you know, installations, to make it just, you know, historical stories, to make it more interesting and appealing? There's so much history in these gateway cities, and, you know, to be aesthetically pleasing, I just, I think, you know, it's gonna be a community asset for us that live here, as well as for, you know, to attract people from other communities as well. So I just, I just wanna put that in the request, actually, I don't need an answer, I'm gonna put that in as a request for some of the design elements and the stopping areas and things like that. And also, some of the things that people would make great suggestions of, we can, as the rail trail association, we're, our fiscal agent is a community foundation in North Central Massachusetts. We've started, we've started an endowment fund, because this is, you know, this is a long-term thing, and we wanna have good support for it, take care of it, so anybody can make a donation, by making a donation to the community foundation in North Central Mass, and put Twin Cities Rail Trail in the middle line. So, thank you.
So Andrea brings up a good question about artwork, installation of artwork, and interpretive signage along the trail, or however we may wanna do that. So I sit on the board that funds trail projects across the state, and that program, the recreational trails program, does entertain grants for enhancement of trailside areas, and so artwork is something that we do a support and fund.
Good evening, my name is Jay Bry, your wife. And I'm here in my capacity as the Vice President for Pittsburgh State University. We're basically just here to express our support for this great project, we think it's a great opportunity for both the communities, but also really see it as a potential way to get the six thousand students that attend the university more connected with both these communities, and assets which really strongly advocate to make sure that that second phase really does follow them right on the heels of the first phase, because that's where we'll connect the rail to downtown Pittsburgh, and more connected right there to that Intermodal Station.
Hi, Bill Latimer, B L A T I M E R, Pittsburgh. Two questions. One is, there was a sand embankment collapse behind Longhorn some years ago, I think that was one of the bridges you were showing. I'm wondering, you know, given that we've got climate change, we're told there are going to be more extreme storms coming, if we have other sand embankments like that that are waiting to collapse. The other question is, my wife had a medical issue a few years ago, became a lot more aware of ADA issues, she also has a recumbent bike, trike. They're really quite particular, and you can't just build something and leave it and expect that it's going to be perfectly fine. Things like the newly-built trails, relatively recently-built asphalt trails like up in there, very quickly have erosion problems that are in no way within ADA standards, and really can be very significant barriers. So I'm just concerned about, you know, since erosion right off the side, you have two-inch erosion if you have dirt bikes and so on, on the trail, as well as just rock, rock lumps, lift-ups, all sorts of things.
Well, your first question, you'd be surprised that this was, at this location, there was a, it was a five-by-five block culvert, and it got blocked by trees, and the city ended up taking down the entire embankment, so it wouldn't flood. So it's not the case of the solely erosion, it's the culvert got blocked. We think this is the only location in the entire project where that would have happened if it had, which is why we're putting a hundred-foot bridge replacement. And then as far as see, make the ADA accessibility, that really is up to the cities to maintain the trails. I agree that some trails, it gets washed away, you're talking about the edge of the trail where there's a lip, and it becomes very dangerous, it is a city maintenance issue. Usually, there's a shoulder next to the pavement, too, so things like crushed stone, a little heavier aggregate might help with that situation.
My name is Jennifer Thornton, T H O R N, T O N. I'm also a recumbent bike rider, although I'm not a road bike rider. But short, steep hills are really troublesome for recumbent riders, we're usually riding them because we have bad backs. And so I'm hoping that the gradiness that are going on to the bridge, the entrance to the bridge, are more matching the ADA requirements for gradiness, and a quick, steep little thing to connect to them.
The bridge approach will have to be ADA on the bridge.
Okay. I've hit rail trails, older ones, where you hit a bridge, and I get off and get on to the bridge and then start up again, because I just can't, it's too steep. I have standard two-wheel recumbent, and you cannot lean forward and put weight on the front wheel and still pedal, because you need to operate yours. Quite honestly, it's okay. Thank you.
John, I believe during the bridge approach, climbed it, there will be some location where it comes to a flat area, and then it resumes the climb, so there would be some resting location.
That's a good point. At every pier, there'll be a flat area, the trip? At every pier, there'll be a flat area, and it'll ultimately be an old road. Like the North River, North Natural River Bridge, they have a look at the bridge and rest. But the maximum grade's four and a half percent on all these bridges, which I would get off and wipe myself anyways.
I've never spoken to a bunch of people, but I own a piece of property.
Your name?
My name is Paul, the last name Hebert, and it's spelled the same way as Hebert County, so I'm not that sweet, but it's not a shame. Now, I own about two hundred feet on a corner of Hamilton and Route 12. On the other side of Hamilton Street is the credit union. And when the cars come around, they come around real fast. And when I go to cross the street on Hamilton Street, I look up the street, I look down the street, and then I run across the street. Because you know why? I've almost been hit twice there. There's a lot of traffic there. Now, I was, fortunately, I talked to Mr.
Henderson.
Jonathan. So he was showing me some of the plans. The plans that they have for Route 12 down below, if you're coming from Pittsburgh, you go over Route 2, you go to a stretch, and you come to a set of lights. Now, the people coming there are supposed, excuse me for, I have the tremors, my wife called it. And anyway, when you come to the lights, you're supposed to stop and look for the green arrow. They never stop and look at the green arrow. And then, if you don't believe me, there's all kinds of accidents out on Route 12, where Hamilton Street comes like this, and then the rail trail comes like that, then the street goes right straight into Hamilton, into Route 12. On the other side, because it's credit union, they have a walk... On the other side, because it's credit union, they have a wall there. And the people come down, there's two lanes, and they come down real fast and they don't slow down much. But when they come around the corner, if you're there with a car, a person, a dog, you're gonna get your pill, they're gonna run over you.
Yeah.
And that's why, when I cross, I look up the street, down the street, and then I run across. Because I've almost been hit twice there. So what I'm trying to say is, I'm not against the rail trail, but the people along the rail trail, I have my land there, it's 200 feet deep. And they start going across my driveway and the lawns and everything else. And you know, when you talk to them, they get insulted.
Yeah.
I mean, they really do. And so, lucky I'm 83, because if I was 43, I would kick. Hey, my problem is, I've never been afraid. Only once in my life has I ever been afraid of somebody else. And so, am I against the rail trail? No, but I don't want anybody going across my property anymore. You understand? I want a fence there.
Yes.
200 feet. And so, you can do your rail trail all you want and, you know, and I have no objections, but you're not going to walk across my property because you're gonna get it. I'm not kidding, do you think I'm kidding now? There's a lady there and she has parked there right behind me, is at least 50 feet. She needs fence there too. Because you know what's gonna happen, they're gonna go through the back. Don't let me catch them going through the back on my property. Because I'll get here. And if I can't take care of them, I know somebody who will. And so, again, that Route 12 down there, if you check with the police station, where's Mayor Dean Mazarella? You check, you check with the police station and you check with the fire department. They have accidents so bad down there, did you know I couldn't even get in my driveway? I had to pack that shorts and walk, walk down the street to get into my own house. That's not gonna happen again either. And so, I'm telling you that that section. I guess I'm about to be talking too long. So I'm telling you that there's a set of lights there and it's my concern, I don't know if it's just the movement, but they're supposed to lower, and then some streets look like that, and then when you get on Route 12, you get a steep incline which goes right into Route 12. So when they come around, or they go the other way, that's why there's always accidents there.
They're giving you the hook. Just for the record, and should we get into the record, Dean Mazarella again, that there's another project going on simultaneously for that fun section of North Main Street from the hospital all the way down to, 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 to Hamilton Street. And those projects, the two aren't being done separately. I mean, it's separate projects, but they're done so the designers are working together so we don't end up in a project that's like this. And so, all your comments have been taken into consideration and you're right, you're 100% right.
It's dangerous.
It is, I agree with you for once.
So I'm just, I'm just telling you, they've got to do something. Now, when they, they lowered the road on Hamilton Street, this, this doesn't have quite a steep incline, they're supposed to go in and cut it down. What are you gonna do with the rail trail that's still up here?
He's fixing it. He said he's fixing it.
You do that every year, so don't worry about it. The water and the shore is bad enough.
Okay, so, yes, there is another project on Route 12 which will address the intersection at Hamilton and Route 12. And the grade that you see coming down off of Hamilton at, coming into that Route 12 intersection, that will also be addressed as well, so they will be cutting into that. And it'll be coordinated with the elevations on, on the rail trail. And in fact, the 25% plans for that project have, they arrived, I believe, on Monday. So the process for that will, it'll go into a 25% review period. And I believe there will eventually be even a public hearing for that project as well. So I'm sure that all of you will be looking forward to that. Any further questions or comments?
Thank you, Amy Green, once again, this will be my last time, I promise. With Andrea Freeman's point about the historic landmarks, I do want to say, as president of the Pittsburgh Historical Society, Ivor Johnson is a huge historic value to Pittsburgh. Some of you may probably know this, big manufacturing of bicycles along with firearms. So we will definitely want to take into consideration the importance of Ivor Johnson bikes along this bike trail as a historic marker for our community. Because that was huge for us and we want to take the opportunity to recognize that and keep that history alive as we move forward.
Hi, Natalie Higgins, state representative for the Fourth Wester District. The city of Lancaster, apologies for being late, we had session, so I just got back. I really just wanted to thank you for having the public hearing and for everyone who came out. I think that this is a really great opportunity for the Twin Cities. And I just wanted to use this opportunity to thank the Twin Cities Rail Trail Association for keeping this going for the last 16 years. And I'm excited to work with the MassDOT to see this project come to completion.
Thank you, representative. Are there any other further questions or comments?
Hi, I'm James Clune, I'm just a concerned resident and a trail enthusiast, I like riding on my bicycle. I was wondering, you mentioned there's easements that are required with this, possibly permanent and or temporary. Who would be the owner of that, of those easements? The Massachusetts Department of Conservation Recreation be involved with that at all, DCR? Or is that strictly a city level?
It's strictly city.
Okay. The other question I was curious about is, in the design plan, we reached, say, April 30th is the end of the design plan. That's hopefully 100%.
That's the next design submission scheduled for April 30th.
So when does that design become available for contractors to bid on, on a construction, go on comp buys?
Well, the goal will be to advertise in September and then that would be the notice of the advertisement in paper which would alert the contractors that it would go to bid like, say, three months after that in the winter.
Just curious. More gratitude, thank you.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Clune, C-L-U-N-E.
Again, more Co, that's C-O-A-G-E. My request is supposed to request and a comment, but if we're talking about art that might go on the trail and short pictures and city history, one of my personal favorite authors is also a fellow City of Lancaster resident, Harvey Salvatore, and I think it would be amazing if I could just be biking down that trail. Or if someone from another community, another state even, just biking down the trail. And I see this awesome character, Driz Doring, for example, one of my personal favorites from his works on the Run Realm series. So if that's possible, I would love to see that, just on a bike, just biking through the woods. All of a sudden you see this awesome dark elf, just staring, just two swords drawn. If his twinkle wears drawn, just staring you down, and this is louder than eyes, that would be amazing, wouldn't it? Also, I'm sure he's gonna, I'm sure he's gonna, he's gonna be another request I'm gonna put in right now. John Chapman, or I think he's more well-known, Johnny Appleseed, another good Lancaster resident. And Don Featherstone, if you could put some sort of a modest handout up there, that would be amazing. Because that's definitely something that fits with both City of Lancaster and City of Pittsburgh. Who can agree, Don Featherstone, he did some really good stuff. Glad to say so, thank you very much.
Jeff Arger, resident of Lancaster. Just in the notion of gravity, I'm standing next to the plans and I see there's 77 pages of plans. I know we've all been here for quite a while. Is, I don't think there's really been a mention of putting the plans online or viewing within a public comment period. It's a 10 days that the comment period will, will be open. I think we can step back to that.
Sometimes with the rail trail, with the number of plans, the size of the files can get very large too. So if something were to be posted, you know, like on, say, the municipal site or the rail trail site, it would be some of the, probably some of the selective work that, you know, like maybe showing some of the the bridge work over the highway or over the swale here. Or, you know, just some of the more defined design features. Anything you want to add, John?
That's a good point too. Linda also said that each city and like, say, the engineering department, you know, any of you can go in and visit and we can make sure that there's definitely a full-size set of plans there so that you can go in and really view them at any time.
If you're in a butter and you don't see a specific section that covers your.
Make it official, Dick, come on.
Property.
You gotta become part of the official records.
So my question is, if you're in a butter and you have a concern and you can't, like, get to City Hall, can they request, you know, if they tell you, we live, I'm just gonna pick a street, I live on North Main Street and I buck the rail trail between here and there. Can, can we get you to send just that one sheet to us at our email address?
We get requests all the time, you know, like, just for like a certain address and they have a question about their property. And so we, you know, we can look it up and we can take the PDFs immediately on that location and have it sent out by email that way. I mean, that is good suggestion and, you know, and if you're, if you receive something through the rail trail committee, then we can coordinate that. They can even get ahold of you, you can get back to us and then, you know, we could very easily send out a couple PDF sheets. I mean, that way there, it's, it's quick and easy and manageable on the email. I'd also like to remind that, you know, at any time, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be as part of the public comment period. You can go to the MassDOT website, there's a MassDOT feedback email. You can write to the rail trail committee on their site and they can get ahold of us and we can take down, you know, any of the suggestions that you might have and, you know, so we can get that back to the design team, you know, to look at some of the suggestions that you might have. You know, if anyone missed a hearing and they have a question or comment, you know, you can email any of those comments in. And also, are there any further comments or questions at this time? We can, I just want to say on the, on the back of the handout, there is that comment sheet. You can also use that at any time, you can mail that to the department within 10 business days. If it's beyond that, it would just miss the official transcript period, but you can still mail in a comment at any time and, or email, either or. If there are no further questions at this time, just like to say that the design team and I will stay around and help answer any questions that you might have after the hearing. And, and like I said, you can use the mail-in sheet. So I'd just like to, first of all, thank everybody for attending this evening. It's a great turnout, as John said earlier, you know, one of the best turnouts we've seen in a long time. So thank you very much for attending. And I would like to thank the rail trail committee and the municipalities for setting us up with this room this evening at the DoubleTree Inn. And it was really, it was a good establishment here for tonight's hearing and, you know, being able to have the microphone and having the, having it recorded. So thank you very much. And the time for the closing of the hearing is 7:59, oh, just turned to 8 o'clock PM.